All right. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 Board of Education meeting and reorganization. The board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock for the items listed on the agenda. And at this time, we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the three public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. So I have the list here. Lisa Gerhold, come on up to the podium, and the timer will beep when the three minutes are up.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Lisa Gerhold Dirks. I am Chair of the Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition and parent of two District 205 students, one at Sandberg and one at York. I've also spent many years at Hawthorne as the Go Green Committee Chair and as part of the teacher-parent team that developed Hawthorne's outdoor classroom. Cool Cities is a local volunteer coalition of residents and organizations, including Elmhurst College, Library, Garden Club, and Park District, working to bring sustainable solutions to the Elmhurst community through education and local advocacy. Over the last several years, we've noticed a significant growth in community interest for sustainable, healthy living. We've introduced ourselves to several of you over the last few months to share how many of our key focus areas relate to issues that District 205 comes across on a regular basis, and some that will pertain to the new facilities work that will take place in the coming months and years. These include energy efficiency and renewable energy, waste reduction, including food scrap composting, which you heard about at one of the most more recent meetings in the last month, green infrastructure for stormwater management, green fleets, and pesticide-free green spaces. Tonight, we're focused on lawn pesticides and are asking District 205 to take actions to reduce pesticide use on district properties. As you may know, we have worked with the Elmhurst Park District, one of our coalition partners, on this issue, resulting in Van Vors Park being designated their first pesticide-free park. Our work with the Park District is ongoing, and the Park Board will be discussing further pesticide reductions at a workshop next month. Also of note, Elmhurst College began their transition away from synthetic pesticides about a year ago, and this year is planning to eliminate broadcast spraying and will switch to organic products for certain uses. We were convinced of the dangers of glyphosate and other commonly-used pesticides long before the multimillion-dollar lawsuits and rulings in favor of plaintiffs with cancer that have made national news. We're asking for your support, for the board's support, for pesticide-free green spaces because we want safe places for our children to learn and play. Many schools in the district have vegetable and native gardens on their grounds. Synthetic pesticides and drift from the application process can contaminate the vegetables and harm the animals, birds, bees, butterflies, and other pollinators that make their homes in these gardens. These chemicals should be kept out of stormwater runoff, detention basins, and Salt Creek. There's growing support for pesticide reduction in the community, and we hope District 205 will join in the effort to make Elmhurst a safer place to live and educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jill Jarvis.
My name is Jill Jarvis. I'm a Jefferson Elementary parent and PTA member. I'm also part of the Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. My story began with Cool Cities about four years ago. I was at Pioneer Park with my then-three-year-old, my four-month-old baby, and my dog. As we were leaving, I noticed those small, little white "Stay Off the Grass" signs at the exit, a park that is used so frequently by families and children, and I was shocked to learn that pesticides were being applied there and at our schools. I've since learned that the pesticides and fertilizers being applied to our school grounds are not without risk. One of the pesticides used, called Escalade, is labeled by the EPA with the signal word "warning." For reference, the Park District only uses products with the signal word "caution." These signal words are an EPA registration label regulation. 24D is the active ingredient in Escalade. The World Health Organization's International Agency for the Research on Cancer has labeled 24D as a Class IIb possible carcinogen. The other pesticide being used, Razor Pro, lists glyphosate as its main active ingredients. This is labeled as a Class IIa probable carcinogen. Please also note that the school district is broadcast spraying these pesticides at least two times a year, in the spring and in the fall, versus the Park District's current one application. Now, I love the fact that our district offers our students access to outdoor classrooms, vegetable and native gardens, certified monarchway stations, and natural prairie at almost every school in our district. What I don't love is the fact that these places are being sprayed with pesticides, whether directly or indirectly. And what frightens me the most is that children are the most vulnerable to these chemicals due to their size, their immature immune systems, and their developing nervous systems. The American Academy of Pediatrics Council on Environmental Health stated in a report in December 2012 that evidence demonstrates associations between early lifetime exposure to pesticides with pediatric cancers, decreased cognitive function, and behavioral problems. Now, there are several surrounding districts that are already committed to reducing their pesticide use. LaGrange Elementary District #105 has verified that no herbicides, pesticides, or any other biological agents are used during their treatments. Park Ridge and Winneka School Districts have also eliminated synthetic pesticide use. Lisle District #202 and Everson High School District #202 have sustainable pest control policies in place right now that include natural lawn care and integrative pest management. The feedback I've received from the community and parents is positive, and I know I speak for a lot of residents and parents when I say that I'd be okay with a few more weeds if it means a safer place for my children to run and play at school. We are thrilled that the Park District has been responsive to our pesticide-free initiative, and we are looking forward to our continued collaboration. We are now asking the school district, board members and staff, to do the same. It's essential that we continue this discussion and give our students and their families peace of mind that the school district's grounds are both safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of board meeting minutes. Approval of March 19, 2019, and April 9, 2019 minutes. Are there any changes? Okay, then those stand as presented. Approval of March 19, 2019, and April 9, 2019, closed session minutes. Those stand as presented. Okay, before we begin tonight's recognition, I'd like to read a statement regarding the status of the Elmhurst Intergovernmental Agreement. For the past year, the city of Elmhurst and District 205 have been negotiating an intergovernmental agreement to resolve three major issues involving millions of dollars. The first, payments the district believes are due from the city under a 2004 tax increment financing agreement. Number two, the city's claims for a stormwater fee arising out of the reconstruction of York High School in the year 2000. Number three, the city's request to construct major stormwater retention projects on the district's Jackson Elementary School and York High School sites. In November of 2018, the district formally proposed a comprehensive 60-plus-page agreement to the city, to which the city responded in mid to late February. In March, the district presented what it regarded as a near-final draft of the agreement. The district's proposal incorporated much of the city's February proposal and addressed what the district believed was the last remaining issue of significance. The district would accept a permanent stormwater facility on the York site if the city would contribute to the district's acquisition of land near the York site to partially offset the portion of the site taken up by the stormwater facility. The city responded on April 19th with what it characterized as a final proposal. The city's April 19th proposal offered some money for the land offset, but then backtracked from its February proposal in several significant deal-breaking ways. Number one, the city withdrew its February agreement to permit the district to terminate the Jackson stormwater facility easement if needed by the district for educational purposes after a lengthy period of time. Number two, the city withdrew its February proposal to relocate the stormwater facility at York if the district needed the original area for educational purposes. Number three, the city limited its proposal to relocate the stormwater facility at Jackson. Number four, the city shifted to the district the responsibility and cost of inspecting, repairing, and maintaining both the York and Jackson stormwater facilities after five years. Number five, the city withdrew its proposal to reimburse a portion of the district's legal and engineering fees associated with the agreement. The city's regressive proposals fundamentally and permanently compromise the district's flexibility and discretion to meet the educational needs of our students and impose significant stormwater risks and costs which should be borne by the city, not the district. It is apparent to the district from the city's proposal that further negotiations will not produce an agreement which protects the district's interests. The consensus of this board is to communicate to the city that the district will not engage in further negotiations with the city for the construction of the city's stormwater projects on district land, and that the district will explore other avenues to press its claims for the TIF money which it believes the city owes the district. After thousands of hours and significant expenses, it is time for the board and the administration to put aside efforts to reach agreement with the city and return to focusing on our core mission of educating children, including providing facilities which are safe, welcoming, and promote instruction, and without the burdens, risks, and costs imposed by the city's major stormwater management projects. So now, now we begin the passing of the baton. So I had to write down my comments because I knew I wouldn't be able to think on the spot. But for the last eight years, three people leaving this board have served this community exceptionally well. They have met for a minimum of 20 scheduled meetings each year, read their board packet on the weekends, met with countless community members to hear varying perspectives, visited schools, read articles, and researched to learn more about the challenges and successes in education, attended training sessions and continuing education opportunities, represented the district in multiple capacities throughout the community and the state of Illinois, attended district functions and PTA meetings, and spent many nights lying awake thinking about a challenging decision ahead, all while managing their own careers and raising families. By my very, very conservative estimation, that's a minimum of 2,000 hours of volunteer service to this community and countless hours of lost sleep. It is a great honor given by our community to serve our school district. As the incoming board members will soon realize, this position is humbling. Until you take your seat at the table, you cannot truly grasp the monumental task that lies in front of you: setting the course to educate 8,500 diverse students well each and every year, wisely stewarding the resources of a community that includes over 40,000 taxpayers, meeting the challenges of the day while preparing for future challenges you have yet to see, ensuring professional growth and varied employment opportunities for our over 1,000 employees. While seated, you are held to a higher standard. This work requires integrity, trust, and courage, all of which the three of you have exhibited well. So for that, job well done. Before my fellow board members recognize each of you individually, I just want to say thank you for the privilege of serving alongside of you for the past few years. We've done some great things together. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Margaret, who's going to recognize John.
So what do you guys think? Should I make John come and stand in the center?
And shake all our hands at the end.
And shake all our hands at the end. Seriously. Kara, thank you for the acknowledgement of all our board members' contributions, and I am honored to speak specifically on John McDonough's role on the board. These comments are on behalf of the entire board and the cabinet. However, before I acknowledge John, I want to acknowledge his family: Jill, his wife, and his children, Ryan, Justin, Marty, and Maggie. Thank you for sharing your dad-husband with the community for the past eight years. I know during this time, he has missed countless school events, family dinners, birthday celebrations, and many other family events due to BOE meetings, community events, and other board work. We thank each of you for your selfless sacrifices and all the extra efforts you have endured over these last eight years. Now I want to speak to a few key roles that John has held during his tenure on the BOE. John has been the Chair of the Policy Committee for the last six years. John's background as a lawyer proved invaluable, as he provided insight into the nuances of making effective policy, and that policy is the foundation of all our board's actions. John is a champion of equity for all students. As an example, John served on the SACID, which is the State Association for Special Education in DePage County, board to ensure our district's special education students' resources were maximized through this organization. John also served on the Intergovernmental Group, the Park City Schools Committee. This group's work is undervalued by all parties involved, yet their work is crucial for effective inter-operations of our community. And I stress the plural of communities, because while there is significant overlap, there are differences in boundaries and priorities, and as we just heard, missions. And it's these inherent differences that can cause confusion. Some of the collaborative work that John has been on, he's been a significant contributor in, as evidenced in the writing of the TIF, which is the Tax Incremental Funding, agreements. Now, I spoke to you a lot about what John did, but I have to add one more on who John is. John is incredibly insightful and can often see into complex situations and point out areas that have been overlooked in a proposed solution. Now, sometimes, this insight comes when it appears that the discussion is closed. However, John consistently shows the courage to share this insight and to state what has been overlooked, and our board has made better decisions because of his wisdom and courage to share his insight. John, we thank you, and we will greatly miss your selfless service and dedication. I'm going to call Karen. Karen is coming. Do you want to say something?
It's nice to see Shannon's family here. I remember eight years ago, meeting them, and Jordan was not even in school yet, right? Yeah, I'm glad I wrote this down, because I would get really emotional right now. It's incredible to be working with this crew, which I had not met before eight years ago. And, you know, all the things that Margaret said for you, John, I mean, we could just be endless, talking about how much you three have contributed to the board, to the community, and really represented everyone well. But here's my statement: It's a pleasure to recognize outgoing board members, my fellow peers. I'd like to start by recognizing this entire group of utmost professional people, working tirelessly, thoughtfully, bringing things up that aren't always easy to bring up, and working on things until they're closed and done and the best they can be, taking in all kinds of input from people all along the way, and even until the end, and making sure that we've included it somehow and considered it, that we don't discount anyone, because every voice is important to us. And that's what we have proved and brought to this community. Working together with many different groups, a tremendous amount of good work has been accomplished in these last eight years. Much progress has been made to continue the great education legacy that we knew we were walking into big shoes to fill. To all of you, it's been an honor and privilege to work with you and alongside you, and to get to know each one of you. To think prior to 2011, I did not know any of you. Your individual and collective expertise, your ability to look at the big picture, which actually is the role of the Board of Education as leaders, your professionalism, and tremendously a stewardship of the community's investment in our great education system. Specifically, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I'm recognizing you, Shannon. You filled big shoes, and I must begin with the collective work that we did on the board, from the very beginning of collecting all of the various Board of Education members' input and feedback that they got from staff and community during our campaign. We used all of that input that we received from the community and the staff tirelessly to form a strategic planning effort, so that we can ensure we're looking at the big picture, that we were representing the entire district, and the desire of the District 205 community and staff. You were invaluable in that effort, Shannon. This set the stage for us to look at the entire organization, to realize the benefits of being a unit district, and it helped us to maintain the balanced view when we were getting all kinds of information in, and to really focus on all of our students and move the district forward while taking a comprehensive approach, which people said we couldn't do. We recognize your never-ending commitment to represent the community's interests. Even to this day, you are bringing in the community's interests. Even as you are entering York with your oldest, you're still very involved to make sure that you're representing the community, the students, and the parents' interests. And you included even representing us as a Board of Education as we launched our Focus 205 efforts, creating opportunity to engage the community and staff as we defined a comprehensive plan. We wanted everybody's voice to be heard. We were able to move from an environment where we were not able to say, "Don't say the R-word, don't say the big B-word," to actually asking the community their thoughts about boundaries and determining if there was any interest anywhere for boundary changes. We put it out to the community and let the community decide. And the overwhelming passage of the $168.5 million referendum and a comprehensive master facility plan for our district. You represented us well, Shannon. You led the Board of Education as a president as we launched these initiatives. Thank you for your commitment to improving the instructional experience in the classroom. Shannon was the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, and we thank you for your dedication to the values of the community and reflecting those in your decision-making. We thank you for representing us on the Lisandro Museum, on SACID, on the City Schools and Parks Committee, and we thank you for dedicating, many times, a full-time effort, right, Mike? Right, family? And being student-centered and focusing on the benefits of being a unit district working together for our community. The community has been well-served by your dedication and commitment, by your thoughtfulness, by your thoroughness, by your wisdom, by your courage and strength to move our schools and the entire district forward for all of our students. Thank you for your service to the Elmhurst District 205 community, Shannon.
I wrote down everything I could think of. Took this whole one side of this paper. But, you know, Chris likes to give me a lot of grief, because often I'll stand up here, and just because of the accomplishments of our students, the awe-inspiring things that people do, I get a little choked up, and Chris never misses an opportunity to point that out to me. So frankly, I can't think of an event that would be more likely to get me choked up than this one. But first, I have to recognize the real core of Chris's wisdom, and I'm going to ask the part of the Bloom family that's here to stand up, because these people allow him to donate so much time. They deserve a round of applause. Plus, I can't miss an opportunity to embarrass the entire Bloom family. You know, Chris has led our finance committee for the last seven years, and it's not often that a school district gets the opportunity to have a real CFO head their finance committee. Our students have benefited greatly by good decisions at Chris's guidance through good capital allocation. Chris Bloom and Chris Welton have made an absolutely fantastic team guiding this district to fiscal, fiscal success. I mean, when I joined the board, the district was not in a position to pay its bills for the entire year. And today, we have 60% of a year, or 50% of a year's budget in reserve, all while increasing our district's ranking within the state and the academic achievement and the bright futures of all of our students in this district. Chris has served taxpayers very well, but his compassion, his good judgment, has served our students even better. I'm going to miss my colleague and my very good friend, Chris Bloom, as well as Shannon and John. This community, from the three of your service, has This community, from the three of your service, has benefited greatly and will be eternally in debt to all of you. So, Chris, come on up. It's a lovely piece of granite, isn't it?
You don't have to read it, that's the best part.
And I don't have to read it, so I won't.
Yes.
But all I can say is I'm going to miss you.
It's all your fault that I'm here.
So now you get to make your parting comments. So, John, you're up.
I'm going to take a point of privilege here and get a little preachy. But that's nothing new. You guys should be used to it by now. The first thing I want to say is thank you. Thank you to all of you, all of you who have helped so much. Our superintendent, amazing staff, the teachers, the professionals, the community members, the parents. But most of all, not most of all, but included is my board colleagues. I want to say it's just been an honor to work with you. I've learned so much and I've been so grateful to be on a team with such wonderful, giving, dedicated people. But I also want to say thank you to everybody again, not for myself or for the board, but for the kids of this community. In this community, the concept of public schools is alive and vibrant. Our kids come mostly from Elmhurst, but they also come from Bensonville, Addison, Wooddale, and Oakbrook. I almost said Oak Park. Oakbrook. And although we recognize that there are sometimes inequities in Illinois public education, we hold firm to the view that public education is something that binds us together in purpose and development of the kids of our community. And I think it's a noble cause. It's our mission. You read our mission statement, "It's for all kids to be college, career, and life-ready." And it's our mantra. We keep saying "all" means "all," and it's embedded in our culture and it shows up in every decision and it shows up in every discussion, and that's a credit to what you all have done to bring that to the forefront. I don't think we recognize, Jim has talked about this before, we don't recognize how unique this is in America, a successful public school system. In many parts of our country, public education is suffering and in some places, it's all been abandoned. But in District 205, it thrives, welcoming and retaining some of our best and brightest professionals, teachers, employees, all striving to provide each child's needs for the future, their particular future, and in the process, binding together a community in common purpose. So, public education, as I believe, is fragile in America and it's fragile in Illinois and it's even fragile in this community, although there are other communities nearby where it's even more fragile than here, but it is fragile. And so what can we do to protect and preserve it? And the thought I came up with is this idea of trusteeship through the board. This idea that the board members are trustees. They make every decision, every initiative, they focus on preserving and protecting public education in this community. And so to our new board members, I want to say welcome. I'm so grateful you're serving. And to both our new and continuing board members, I'd like to say, as a taxpayer and a homeowner and a proud father of four York graduates, thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for everything you're going to do. We really appreciate it. I just want to say good luck. Don't hesitate to call. And let me repeat Dave Carlquist what he said to us when we took our seats. Good luck stumming the castle.
All right, Shannon?
I just have a few comments to make. I want to thank the board members and their families and staff, Dave, the cabinet, everybody. It's just a really great district and we should feel proud of our community and our district and try to focus on all the other good things that are happening. And looking back, we started in 2011 with a mission to improve education. And our board had no other agenda other than that. And we all came at it at looking at the district from a comprehensive view, not at any individual issues separately. And with this goal in mind, we aimed to build relationships with staff, parents, PTA, community groups, and our sole purpose was to improve educational outcomes. And we successfully did that. We updated curriculums at all levels. We provided computers for all students. We have more STEM classes, career pathways. We laid the groundwork over four years to pass the referendum. We started Indiana University classes at York. We're the first Illinois high school to offer Indiana classes at York. And those are for all kids, extending college classes for not only AP students, but kids that need a 2.8 grade point average are able to take college classes at York. So we really wanted to serve all students. We established the York Distinguished Alumni Program to celebrate all the great things that people do when they leave Elmhurst. So we worked as a team and we put our individual interests aside and it had an unbelievable effect when you do that and the whole is better than the parts. And I'll miss working with you. We brought, each of us, each brought our individual strengths and it was great to learn from you. I hope to stay in touch with all of you. And thank you for the privilege to serve this district and I'm proud to be a part of this great community. Thank you.
All right, Chris.
They still had to get sworn in after you gave them the truth, right? All right, just checking. All right, first off, I'd like to thank my board family. Over the last eight years, it seems I've spent as much time with all of you as I have with my own family, always within the confines of the Open Meeting Act, of course. I am particularly proud of how we've been able to bring together our varied experiences and perspectives to arrive at a shared direction for the district with our kids at the center of it. It has truly been an honor to serve with and learn from such a group of intelligent and dedicated individuals. I would also like to thank the administration and staff. And while Dave deserves a lot of credit for building a great team, I'm sure he'd be the first to say that the credit should be shared. Thank you all very much for what you do for our kids, for your help in educating us as a board and willingness to listen to our guidance with respect to the Elmhurst Way. Thank you equally for your patience with us. Believe it or not, we do recognize that 3,000 votes and a badge that says "board member" does not substitute for PhDs and decades of educational experience. As much as we wish it were true on myriad levels, getting elected doesn't automatically raise one's IQ. None of us are successful unless all of us are successful together, and we thank you all for choosing our team to play on. I must also thank my family, particularly my wife, as every year, it seems her birthday or our anniversary has fallen on a school board meeting night. She shares Karen's birthday, too, so I spent more birthdays with Karen lately than my wife on that day. Thanks also to my kids, who for the most part have grown up being a board member's kid. Hopefully, the times you've been in the audience with your dad on stage haven't been too embarrassing for you. Fortunately, they have assured me that getting me elected wasn't part of a broader conspiracy to get me out of the house, and they really are looking forward to having me home again. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the faith and trust that the community has placed in us. They have given us their most precious resource in their children and trusted us as we've worked to transform education in Elmhurst. They've also provided us with $168.5 million worth of their hard-earned money to ensure that our kids have the benefit of a 21st century infrastructure. This is an incredible vote of confidence that is a privilege to have, with a lot of hard work upcoming to justify. Fortunately, I have strong confidence in the new faces who will take our places. It feels good to be passing the baton to such a capable group of dedicated people. Dave, you got that? One last slide. In closing, I would like to offer one piece of perspective here, and when I saw this, it really struck me. I found this referendum presentation slide to be one of the most compelling endorsements for our success. If you look at the bottom graph, there is one district out of our comparators that have grown. As tempting as it might be to attribute this unique growth in our community to the myriad Tiff Finance yogurt shops in town, I prefer to think of it as a result of families being drawn to our town by the exceptional quality of a District 205 education, which is driven by the leadership of our board administration, strong parent-community participation, and ultimately, the great teachers in our kids' classrooms. It's been a privilege to have been part of such an extraordinary team that has had such an impact on our community. Thank you, and I look forward to watching District 205's next chapter unfold with all of you.
Thank you. So basically, you take your nameplate and run. Okay. Now we move on to the reorganization of the Board of Education. So the first item on the agenda is the acknowledgement of the receipt of the certified election results, which I have here, which certifies that Chris Kozinski, Elizabeth Hostler, Karen Stufen, and Courtney Troutman are all elected to the Board of Education, Karen being reelected and staying. So at this time, I would like the three new board members to come up to the middle and I will administer the oath. Okay, so you are to repeat after me. So I, and then say your name, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive We're only halfway through. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Elmhurst Community Unit School I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205. And lastly, I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal All right, welcome to the school board. Okay, you can take your seat and we will get started. Okay, you can put your nameplates in if you want. Then we will move on to the election of president. Margaret?
So I'm calling for nominations for president for the school board.
I nominate Karika Foreo.
Can I ask for a second?
My second?
Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing, normally there would be a vote, but since there is only one nomination, the board accepts the Karas nomination for Board accepts the Kara's nomination for president, Board President, and I turn the floor over to Kara for the continuation of the reorganization.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Your confidence, honor to serve. Okay. So, we move on to the election of vice president. So, is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Margaret Harrell for vice president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Without any other nominations, then Margaret Harrell will be our vice president for this upcoming year. Next is our nomination for secretary. Are there any nominations for secretary?
I nominate Karen Stufen for the role of secretary.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for secretary? Okay. Then Karen Stufen will be our secretary for the upcoming year. Next is the meeting schedule, which is in the, is in board docs. We have proposed the meeting schedule. Were there any issues with that? Okay. Just a note, the meeting time is changing to 7:00 for the upcoming year. So, just FYI. And if there are no changes, then that, the meeting schedule stands as presented. Okay. So, tonight, as we move through the agenda, I'm going to do just a little bit of, you know, reminding, educating, not because they haven't walked through everything, but just, I think it's also not a bad time for the community to understand sometimes what we're doing. So, the first official item tonight is the consent agenda, superintendent's agenda, which is consent agenda. And the items on here tend to be things that we've already talked about in a previous board meeting, or procedural, yearly, or monthly items. And so, if we don't discuss them, we just vote on the entire list of agenda, consent agenda. But if you want to take one off for discussion, you can ask, and we will remove that and talk about that separately. So, at this time, if there is an item you would like to remove from the consent agenda, Okay. So, with that, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through S.
I second.
Motion by Jim, second by Karen. Go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Super, next on the agenda is superintendent's agenda, action items, approval of the special education bus contract with Cottage Hill.
So, we have two contracts, one for our special education students, which is through Cottage Hill, one through First Student for the rest of our general education purposes. And so, we, when those contracts are up, we need to go through a process of either renewing the services, or looking if there are comparator services that would offer better service. And Cottage Hill, for various reasons, which, if you make a motion and second and would like to discuss, Kathy could address perhaps in more detail, have offered good services in the special education busing services, have uniqueness because of the, obviously, the needs are different, so we recommend that we stay with Cottage Hill as our provider.
We'll have a motion and a second, and then we can discuss before we vote.
I move that the Board of Education approve a one-year extension of the contract with Cottage Hill Operating Company, incorporating a 2.1% CPI increase for the 2019-2020 school year.
I second.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this? Go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Item B, approval of the property schedule, addendum, et cetera.
So, this is, has been presented to you, this is related to the April presentation that we annually make on technology purchases, and so, Dave can address this again if there's discussion after the motion. But I did send the new board members links to the previous presentation. We do this and some of these other items in April due to the work that needs to be done over the summer to get bids out and/or install equipment and be ready for, to be up and running on time for the fall.
So, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve and direct the Board President and Secretary and their designees to execute the property schedule, the addendum, and ancillary documents to the master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bancorp for a new four-year tax-exempt lease and purchase of Lenovo Chromebooks, Dell desktops, Dell laptops, Apple iPads, Palo Alto firewalls, and Cisco network switches in an amount not to exceed the current value of $1,785,000, which the school district will pay with four annual payments not to exceed
I second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I just wanted to say, because I'm not sure if I was really awake last time when you gave your presentation, but (laugh) sorry, it was late. Just thank you for what your department is able to do. I think about the amount of technology that we have going in this district, and for the most part, it just runs, and we don't all think about what you're able to do in your department, and you've basically continued to do it with the same budget and number of resources with little fluctuation, and that is quite an accomplishment. So, thank you for that. I want to make sure that you're recognized for your work, so. All right. No other questions, comments? Okay. Call the vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Next on the agenda, approval of purchase of Lenovo Chromebooks, Chromebook chargers, and Chrome Care warranty coverage.
Again, this is related to our annual technology budget and replacement cycle. So, we utilize Chromebooks in all grade six through 12, as well as some of our elementary grades, and this would be the associated cost with our annual renewals of the replacement cycle. And again, Dave could speak to that in greater detail if you would like.
Motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to purchase from the Technology Resource Advisor, Inc., the following: Lenovo 500E Chromebooks for sale to York freshman in amount not to exceed $255 in purchase price; USBC Chromebook charges for middle-school take-home Chromebooks in the amount not to exceed $25,000 in purchase price; and Chrome Care warranty with unlimited accidental damage protection for 1725 per Chromebook deployed in grade six through 10, paid with funds collected from the technology fee.
Second.
I'll second. But, Margaret, when you read item number one, you did say $255,000 in purchase price. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, $255,000 in purchase price.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I did. Thank you.
Good catch. Any questions about that discussion? Chris?
I just had a question. Do we frequently utilize the warranty covers that we purchase?
Last year was the first year we started this program, and because they were brand-new Chromebooks, we didn't, I mean, it's not a high run rate. It is a four-year program, so we expect to take greater advantage of it. One of the benefits of this, I've been working with the TSI teacher, Kristen Bartholomew, I think without a
Dave, can you explain that?
Oh, the Technology Services Internship, which is a high school course where students do not only Chromebook repairs, but they take other pathways of, you know, to accredit A-plus certification and other things like that. So, it's a, it's a unique program that's very valuable to the district in a couple of ways. It allows us to handle a lot of Chromebook repairs internally, and also without having to add staff to my department, so students benefit from that as well, which is great. But the other piece is, they, because of the growth in the technology in the district and the number of sections that they have, which is limited, it's difficult for them to keep up at times, so this is a bit of an overflow release valve for them. And Kristen, I think will need the help in the years to come now that we have one-to-one at all levels.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Go ahead and call the vote.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item D on the agenda, adoption of resolution of appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors.
So, this is a partnership with the Tech Center, and we have several students that participate in courses out there that we don't offer. Firefighting is one of them, I know, and there are a few others. We have a budget for a certain number of students a year to attend these programs, and we have to have an official representative from the district. So, the Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Growth has been the person that we've tried to structure that position to deal with most of our outside partnership-type work, this being one of them. So, as Mark transitions over to HR, we would ask that you would appoint Scott Grenz to his replacement to be that representative to the cooperative.
Motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors, which appoints Scott Grenz, Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Growth, to serve as its representative for the 2019-2020 school year.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay. Go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item E on the agenda, adoption of SACID Board of Control Governing Board Appointment Resolution.
So, this is another one of our partnerships. We belong to the, this is a special education co-op in DuPage County, and we utilize various different services from them as part of our membership. They have monthly meetings for the Board of Control, which I am listed there to be that representative, with Courtney as the alternate. And then, I think it's twice a year, but it's a few times a year that they have the Board of Control, or the Governing Board meeting, rather, and that is more related to some of the higher-level functions, like approving the budget and things like that. And the recommendation on there would be that you approve Karen to be the rep for that, Karen Stufen, with Beth Hostler as her alternate.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution appointing David Moyer as representative and Courtney Troutman as alternative to the SACID Board of Control, and Karen Stufen as representative and Beth Hostler as alternative to the SACID Governing Board.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
I do. Can we get the schedule? I mean, because we're going to need to, I mean, Dave, you have the schedule, you've been going, but for the board members and the executive council, I know that it's twice, but it might be the end of the year because they do strategic planning.
Yeah. I'll have, I'll have, I'll have Ellen check into that and forward that to everybody. I don't know, I would assume that they're voting on their schedule for next year, one of the, probably tomorrow night's meeting. But, but yes, we will get that for sure.
Thank you to those of you who are stepping up. Appreciate that. Okay. Go ahead and call the vote.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item F on the agenda, approval of settlement agreement between the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education and the Elmhurst Teachers Council.
So, this settlement is something where, again, if there are questions or discussion, Jim can provide more details, but this is an agreement that we reached with the union regarding some compensation for classes that some of our people took through District 205 University, and some confusion about their manner in which they would get compensated for those, for their participation in those classes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement between Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education and the Elmhurst Teachers Council.
I'll second.
Any questions? There are none, so go ahead and call the vote.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Keforio?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item G, approval of themes instructional grants.
So, every year, our teachers are, have the opportunity to put in requests for grants from the foundation, and the primary source of revenue for the foundation is the annual gala. And then, representatives from the administration and the foundation meet together to discuss the grant requests to try to ensure that they support district priorities. The foundation is very committed to supporting all students and has a philosophy of trying to support innovation. And this year, they received 41 grant applications for the amount of $158,600, and they, the request that they're making of the Board is to approve 31 of those grants in the amount of $95,516. Two elementary school grants were awarded to all eight elementary schools, and the other funds touching the middle school and the high school, so that all schools are affected, and the money going in directions that are supporting district learning and teaching priorities. So, we would request that you approve that donation, and I would just add that it's been a great relationship with them and the been a great relationship with them, and the support they give our district is just absolutely phenomenal. We should be grateful for that.
Okay, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the awarding of funds for the 2019 themes grants totaling $95,516, as funded by the District 205 Foundation.
I second. Discussion?
I just want to thank the District 205 Foundation. They do a tremendous job. They've been around since 1988. Every year, they raise more money. Every year, they provide more educational opportunity to supplement what our taxpayers provide. It is, it is a tremendous public-private partnership with the foundation, and I really commend them for their efforts. Thank you.
And I just wanted to share that in May, they're going to come and show what the themes grants that they are awarding are, and some of the new faces that are going to be a part of the foundation for the upcoming year.
Yeah, if I can just add one more thing. Over 50% of this year's themes grants are going to fund opportunities in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. So I think that is a, that's a tremendous effort on their part.
And that was, to give you an example of the partnership, that was a stated priority of the community engagement process, was to increase those types of opportunities for students, so.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to highlight that, and Dave mentioned this, that these theme grants are going to all the schools, all the, all the elementary schools, all the middle school, and York High School. And thank you.
I just wanted to thank the foundation and everyone with the collaborative effort. I mean, I know that we've been working hard to work together, and it just is more and more integrated and seamless, so thank you, foundation.
Okay, no other comments, then go ahead.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, the motion passes. Item H, approval of funding support for Community Unit School District 205's participation in the Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network and the Harvard Scaling for Impact Program.
So we are fortunate to be participating in the national effort through the AASIA and Successful Practices Network, which is the Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network. And then we learned that we were accepted in March into the Harvard Scaling for Impact Program. And what we have identified that we want to try to do in the district is develop and then scale interdisciplinary learning opportunities for all students at every grade level across the district over time. And we have a core group of five people in each of those two endeavors that have come together and shared their learning recently to get a little bit closer to what we think is a plan that we can have going forward to make this a reality. And it's been a great experience. The Harvard experience was terrific, and there will be a report on the work that we've been doing at the May 14th board meeting. But one of the things, I approached the foundation, they agreed to support this in the amount of $5,000, and between that and the grant that we received from Harvard to participate, that has been, that has gone a long way toward minimizing any direct district expense for some of these, some of the work that we've been doing. So that is also greatly appreciated, and I think when you hear Frank from Sandberg and the field people explain what they're trying to do, I think you'll be very excited about the learning environments that they're working on, on creating at the schools. So we appreciate the foundation's willingness to support these efforts and would recommend that you accept the donation.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve acceptance of a donation of $5,000 from the District 205 Foundation to support the initial costs and work associated with participation in the Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network and the Harvard Scaling for Impact Program. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second? Okay, any comments, questions?
I wanted to once again thank the foundation. I mean, this is another example of, you know, working together, where they came to us quite a few years ago and said, you know, we want to be part of the vision, and we want to, you know, be helping the district move forward. So they have been doing that in many different efforts. Even the themes grants, you know, the teachers can apply for grants for anything, but as we stated, they go to every school. They look at having donations go to all students, and it's been a lot of STEM and innovation and the sorts of things that the communities wanted, and they wanted to be part of, and so I thank them so much for, for coming to us and asking us, you know, what's the vision and where do you want, where do you want to go, and we would like to be part of it and work together. So I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
This is one of those challenging times, and I'm gonna go back and just give some history. At a point in time about, maybe about a month or two, a month and a half ago, I made a comment that we wanted to review the way we accepted our gifts to the district. And I also, with that comment, I stated that I would be voting present on all future gifts to the district until we can come up with a unified way to better foresee equity in the giving of those gifts. There have been and continue to be very many noteworthy gifts from community members who have worked very hard to give those gifts, and I am not minimizing that by any means. However, I am recognizing the fact that as a community, we are a district, unit district, and that we need to recognize how we allocate our funds and our resources. So with that reminder, I will be voting present on the next three motions, just in respect to working toward that equity. I think, I know we have made a lot of progress. I know that there's been quite a few meetings that have occurred to make sure that we continue to move toward an equitable way to receive gifts to our district. But I will be voting present until we get that process in place. I don't know if, at some point in time, if Dave and/or Karen want to give an update on what has been done thus far, but just so the community knows why I am voting present in the next three, next three motions, that is why.
Yes, I will give a brief update. The plan is to talk about the, what is the word, plan, at the next PTA council meeting. So some, there were some questions about just kind of tweaking to make sure it was very clear, and, you know, what's, what the plan is, and it's gonna be, you know, talked about at the council meeting, so that the PTA presidents who are current, and then also at that May meeting, the next year's presidents will be there, and that way there can be a discussion, and hopefully everyone will, you know, understand the, not policy, the procedure. And we'll try it for a year, and, you know, come back to it and see what tweaking needs to be done. So that's sort of where that stands. There were just some kind of communication things that they're working out to make sure it's very clear and the timeline's clear for the organizations.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, I just had one quick question, Dave, for the, the $5,000 donation. Is that, is that a standardized level for all participants in this program, or is there an opportunity for, you know, a higher level of collaboration that may benefit our programs for obviously a higher monetary amount?
Yeah, so what I did is, I believe it was 10 people that are involved in this total, and I asked for $500 apiece to offset the travel costs of participating. And, and I suppose that there could be some future opportunities, depending on how this evolves, to get some additional support, but, but I wanted to be sensitive to the fact that, that the foundation has a mission, and, and through its grant process and its fundraising process, does like to support the various different schools, and I, and I wanted to be sensitive that I didn't ask them for too much to support this district function and create any kind of consternation among, among the group about, you know, what it was willing to support.
Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Present.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six ayes, no nays, one present, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is item I, approval of District 205 Foundation donation funded by 100-plus women who care.
This is a holdover from the March agenda. The amount of $14,600 is to go to the school to assist students that have some special needs, if they have financial issues that could perhaps have a detrimental impact on their learning experience. This donation is to go to try to help make sure that all students have access to our programs, if they have special family issues that, that need some attention to make sure that they can learn and participate in, in normal activities of the school. This would go toward students. Also, I would say, just as a reminder, there used to be an organization called YSET that, that no longer exists, that did some of this at the high school, and so they have something here, it's called Duke, what is it called on there?
York.
Duke Depot. And that's essentially kind of a replacement function, and so this, this would go toward the Duke Depot to support students who have some of those special financial needs.
Okay, motion?
I'll take it. I'll make a motion. That the Board of Education approve acceptance, donation of up to $14,600 for York Duke Depot from the District 205 Foundation, as funded by the Elmhurst 100-plus Women Who Care. The donation is accepted in accordance with the Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Okay, and I just want to, first of all, say thank you to the Elmhurst 100-plus Women Who Care for looking out for our high school students, a population that, you know, might try to hide some of those needs, but they're helping them get the resources they need so they can focus on their education, and for the foundation who is taking this donation and putting, you know, doing the logistics of it. And I also just want to say that we, we are grateful it's taken us a couple tries here to get this because of procedural things, to get this approved, and, but that doesn't lessen our appreciation for it, and especially for the students who sometimes aren't, those needs might not be seen. So, thank you.
Karen?
I'd also like to say thank you to the Elmhurst 100-plus Women Who Care for your patience through this process.
Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Present.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six ayes, no nays, one present, the motion passes. Item J, approval of donations from Emerson and Bryan.
So the first one, Emerson, is the Belter Contract and Design Company has offered to donate a refrigerator, estimated value $3,400. This has been approved by our Director of Facilities. It would be used for PTA rec station and other school functions to, for storage, and then $2,200 from the PTA to go toward some refurbishing of the teacher's lounge. The Bryan donation is related, all related to a gaga pit, gaga pit floor balls and the actual pit itself totaling $5,108.50. So then, oh, actually, that's not the total amount, there's also a PTA donation, they would like to go toward a wraparound bench for their outdoor classroom area, that amount is $1,437.70.
I, I'll do it. I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donations from an Emerson School parent in the amount of $3,400 for an industrial refrigerator, from the Emerson School PTA in the amount of $2,200 towards new furniture in the teacher's lounge, from the Bryan Middle School PTA in the amount of $5,108.50 for a gaga pit and supplies, and from the Bryan Middle School PTA in the amount of $1,437.70 for a tree hugger bench. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy Number 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion?
I just wanted to quickly add my thank you to all those involved in raising the funds for this donation and the others that we've approved, and appreciate the community's support for the district, and I look forward to collaborating when we receive recommendations on, you know, any modifications that we make to the equitable distribution of those funds in the future.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Present.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six ayes, no nays, one present, motion passes. Next is Superintendent's Communication, Edison and Bryan Design Concept Presentation.
Since the success of the November 6 referendum, there's been a significant amount of activity to prepare conceptual designs for the Edison and Bryan projects in preparation for the design phase of the project. Much of this activity has been reported at previous board meetings and will be summarized in the upcoming presentation. I apologize that this got in your packet a little bit late, but Whiting Company and ICI had some meetings on Monday, and we wanted to have accurate information that we shared with you. Before they get started, I wanted to remind everyone that the project is being financed through three separate bond issuances, and the work has to be staged to coincide with the funding. Edison and Bryan are the first projects due to the fact that they will be central to the plans to house students in future years during the construction of Lincoln and Field. So with that, I would turn it over to Craig Siepka and Wendy Watts from Whiting Company and Terry Fielden from ICI.
Come on!
You've never been here.
It hasn't been that, yeah, it hasn't been that long. Anyhow, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Moyer and distinguished guests, thanks very much for having us back again, inviting us back here. Been busy at it, but before we get to the presentation, there's a number of people that go into participating and putting together the information and the designs and the construction that we're embarking on over here. So today, along with myself, we have Terry Moller, who you've met before, he's in the back over there, and one of our valued design team members, Megan Stanton, who you'll be seeing a lot more in the future, and then sharing a limelight, limelight with me today, our Senior Educational Ontario Specialist, Wendy Watts, and a community member, Imae Ed, and, and then, of course, from ICI, Terry Fielden. So with that said, I'm gonna start off here with a series of slides that some of you will remember and recognize that we used quite often as we marched through the referendum process and the master planning process and so forth, just to kind of give us a gauge of where, where we are at in the entire, in the entire scope of the project over here. So everything that... worth of work distilled into two columns, very humbling indeed. But we're at a very good place in that right now we're moving into sort of the conceptual design phase of the first group of projects that we're going to be talking about today. So we're just initially starting that, the beginnings of the design process, kind of refining the concepts, and that's what we're here to talk to you about today, to get your thoughts and inputs about that as well. So the rest of all this stuff will be coming back to you at key milestone dates in the course of the life of each one of the projects to either update you or ask for action on certain bids and so forth, but that'll reveal itself over the course of time. Now, if you remember, when we implemented, initiated the project, we had a rather lengthy conversation about the different groups and input and feedback that we were going to get for the project. We had listed a series of four different sets of input givers that we were going to, that's a really poor choice of words, but people that we're going to talk to as far as the project goes to get their thoughts, impressions, and guidance on that. So that first group, the school planning teams, we have been meeting with each one of the schools, let's see, specifically for Edison and Bryan, to talk a little bit about their individual schools, get their thoughts and input with regards to key aspects of the scope of work that was approved in the referendum. So we've been out back and forth a couple of times to those groups, and actually talking several times, certainly with the principals individually, walking the buildings and so forth. And the information that we've gleaned and the data that we've gotten from those conversations has really kind of impacted the designs that we're going to be showing you today. The Administrative Leadership Group, that is a group that we meet with regularly, that is Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Welton, and Dr. Moyer as well. And here we are doing these meetings on a weekly, sometimes bi-weekly basis, depending on the amount of information that we have to exchange and get feedback on. And again, that group is really providing more day-to-day guidance as we march through these projects, very critical. And of course, there's, at the board level, where we're at today, we're also going to be getting input and feedback from you through the Finance Committee, but it's certainly coming to you at key milestone dates as well. And then lastly, the Community Outreach Group, and that is, that is going to happen on several different fronts and different forms, and we'll be, we'll coming back to you to update you on and how that is going to unfold. I think, if memory serves me correctly, Terry, you might want to help me out on this one, but we have two meetings scheduled with the communities over at Edison and Bryan coming up very shortly. I don't even...
Thirteenth and fifteenth.
Thirteenth and fifteenth. So they'll be able to see some of the diagrams and the concepts that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. So, does anybody have any questions with regards to sort of that feedback loop that we've created over here? It's alive and well.
Karen?
Yes, I wanted to highlight, thank you, Bev, for being involved because communication is key. And...
Apologies.
We're glad you're involved.
Yes. Okay. Very good. All right, so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Terry, just to briefly discuss with you, you know, the different project groupings that we have, as well as maybe some of the budget numbers and the schedule, which repeatedly came up at a lot of the discussions that we've had with regards to this project. So Terry?
Thanks, Craig. It's a little low.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. Okay, all right. Well, congratulations, Karen, for being re-elected, and welcome to the three new board members. I am retiring from my board service. Well, it's all true. So I'm going to go through the five major groups that the building program is divided into, just, it's a $168 million referendum program spread over about six years. So this is Group One that we're working on right now, and as Craig has mentioned, and Dr. Moyer. We are focused on Edison and Bryan, those are the two major, those are additions that are going to go there so we can continue work at Lincoln and also eventually all-day kindergarten. And there's some other, the next focus of group run is, of course, the secured entries. And off to the right of the slide, you can see the approximate timeframe that we're going to complete this work in. A lot of it occurs over the summer. And this will be the next group. The bond issues are going to go in three phases, it'll be $25 million, $50,000, and then the final phase issuances. And each grouping kind of mirrors that. So the next phase then will be Lincoln, we'll build a new school, we'll break around on that in the summer after the kids have left the building and moved on into the additions at the other facilities, and then continue for about 14 months. And then we start Group Three with a new field coming online, March the beginning. Group Four, we then get into the bigger chunk of the money, and we start doing odds and ends across the district, touching all the various buildings, Church Freel, Sandberg, Jackson. And these are renovations that are going to happen throughout the project. And as we, as Craig said, as we come back, we'll be updating you as to what those renovations entail and what they're going to provide. And finally, Group Five continues more renovations as we move forward. So very early on in the program, you get some nice glamour, you get some, the additions come up, you get two new facilities, and we get towards the tail end of the program, and you get into the nuts and bolts of the buildings, and you begin overall improvements. So, thank you. All right, so just to repeat, we're here today to talk mostly about the Group One projects, and specifically Edison and Bryan, which really received the bulk of the renovation activity above and beyond the security vestibules that we're contemplating for a number of the elementary schools. So to start things off with, we're going to take a jump over to Edison. And these first couple slides, again, are slides you may remember that we use in communicating our thoughts and ideas about potential improvements over at Edison Elementary School during the referendum process. This is a sort of a bird's eye view, looking down at the building, a floor plan and with the site plan kind of underneath over there. That's how the building exists today. Couple key points to mention is the main entrance that happens right over here, and then, of course, sort of this loop of classrooms with the library on the far end off of Fair Avenue. Your parking is distributed across the site with some hard surface play between the actual building and some of the parking. We had looked at things and considering population, expected population growth, and looking at how we were going to stage kids throughout the district during the course of the construction projects, and came up with a program for this school, which involved a series of renovations focused on moving the main entrance to a more appropriate location where parking could be distributed in the front and people have more access to the building, and relocating the library to a more central location so all students had a little bit more equal access to that particular part of the facility. And then everything within this dash line then being new construction to help support the classroom space needed for increased student population, so that roughly totaled about, in this instance, about 12 classrooms. All-day kindergarten then being grouped, and some of the renovation back over here. Now, we presented this to our first core team group, or school group, that involved parents, teachers, the principal over at that school. Karen, you were there as well, I think, for a couple of the meetings, and some of the administrators throughout the district. Some of the feedback that we got from that particular group centered around a lot of the things that happened on the outside, making sure we had adequate parking, concern for detention, location of the playground, considering safety and security of the children, and then a rather lengthy conversation about courtyards, which was interesting to have and certainly unexpected at that particular point in the project. And all of those things are kind of listed in that blue bar on the left side over there. And we'll come, we'll address those as we march through the program or the designs that we're proposing over here, so that you know that we're acknowledging the input that we're getting and hopefully resolving it to everyone's satisfaction. So this is where we left the project, and then kind of going back to the ranch and noodling through things and rolling up our sleeves and getting going on the design work, we started taking a look at refining those plans. And you'll, probably the biggest, the biggest shift in the evolution of these plans revolves around eliminating the new courtyard that we were contemplating during the referendum, and kind of tucking the building back in the actual classroom addition closer to the existing building, close to this dash line over here. And then, instead of having just regular classrooms or, you know, the first, second, or third grade classrooms in this addition, relocating all-day kindergarten with a gross motor area in the new construction, just to give easier access to the kids, the kindergarten kids that are going to be coming to the school, as well as providing an opportunity, as I had said, for a gross motor activity area that is much needed for that particular grade level. All the other planning principles that we explored and contemplated during the referendum are pretty much intact. We've kept a security vestibule, which Wendy will talk about in just a moment, right over main entrance, security vestibule right over here off of Fair Avenue. The main office is located now where the, where the library used to be, and then the library itself being relocated, now centrally located in the middle of the building with the art room, makerspace, some special ed resource functions and so forth scattered not only in this part of the building, but kind of congregating over in the northeast corner of the facility. So all that pretty much stayed intact, and now starting to take a look at how we can give some shape and have the building be very sensitively placed and nestled within the site to take advantage of as much green space as possible, as well as address some of the nuances of the community. So at this point, what I'd like to do, there's two areas that we'd like to address in a little bit more detail, and Wendy's going to come talk to you about those in just a second. And that would be the way that the main office is shaking out and how that all works with the security vestibule, and then sort of that library media center, which is now the focus in the center of the universe over at Edison. So Wendy?
All right. Okay, so starting off with the main entrance, one of the reasons why we're focusing so much attention on this is it's our opportunity to truly get a secure vestibule in the world of new construction and do this as well as possible. So what we'd like to point out is, first and foremost, which one is the pointer, Craig?
You don't get a pointer.
Oh, I don't get a pointer. First and foremost is that as people, visitors approach the building, that now not only will your front office staff, but your principal and associate principal will have eyes on the street and be able to be seeing visitors as they approach the building, which is something that isn't the case right now with the main office. So then you'll be able to be buzzed into a secure holding vestibule where we imagine there would be a window at the front desk for getting an ID and being vetted that way before being allowed into the main office then, where whomever you are there visiting would come and receive you as a guest of the school before you're allowed out into the greater part of the building. So, a couple steps there, but that'll carry through sort of as a standard as we carry through on the new main entrance at Bryan, as well as the other schools. Other aspects to the main office then are pretty much what you've been seeing in the past, but maybe some of the relationships a little bit better. So at Edison, we, of course, have the principal, but with the increased growth in number of students, then there'll be an assistant principal, a nice, little bit larger conference room for all of those very big IEP meetings that happen, but really placing that nurse function so that there's a coverage and adjacent relationship with that main office. So students can come to the nurse's office from the corridor, as well as parents receiving and picking up. And in that case, they have a toilet room, staff toilet room, and then, of course, the workroom, copier, mail, all of those good things that foster some of the great community in a school, conversations bumping into one another happening towards the back. And then we are sprinkling some of our student support staff members throughout the building, and you'll see that in the overall plan. So I'm going to advance forward now to the library media center that Craig had mentioned being in the middle of the building. So here we are, there is that main entrance admin area, and then the library, front and center, the heart of the building, something that every visitor is going to see as soon as they enter. And this is something that, it's both functional and physical, being right in the middle of the building. So opening up the library and media center so that it's located equidistant pretty much to all of the learning spaces, and while we're suggesting a design here, this has not been vetted yet with Ms. Greska, librarian at Edison, but these are just thoughts, and we're working to develop this in terms of collection sizes and how the actual library itself would lay out. But you'll see, we've sprinkled in some of these spaces here that are labeled SG, that's actually small group. So these are going to be the type of small rooms, two to four students, or, you know, instructor and one student for that one-on-one learning, the pulling out of the classrooms and pushing into these spaces for lots of intervention and, in general, just small group work. And Craig and I have both found that other schools where we've built these people kind of question, well, that's something different that we don't currently do. And I would say typically, we always hear, oh, my gosh, we wish we would have built twice as many of those, there's a million and one uses. So it's just a way of extending that learning outside of the classroom. And then supporting the media center, of course, is the makerspace, which Edison currently has, but we're going to allocate a little bit more square footage, get all the right utilities for them, and then supporting with the workroom, and then the rest of the adjacent areas coming next to the library being art and another special ed drop-in space.
All right. So moving along over here, this is a bird's eye view of the exterior of the school. We just kind of masked it, took all the details out, masked it up, just so you get an idea of how it sits on the site, then looking at what the addition would do, how the parking lays out in conjunction with the playground and how it's hard surface. You can see by the time we get all of those necessary functions taken care of, the amount of green space on the site gets reduced. But in the course of conversations and thinking about the relationship of this site to Sandberg, the idea is, and the thought is, that the green space for that particular school be able to be shared with the students here at Edison. Even with that, we are still looking at massaging the site to push the parking as close as we can to the perimeter of the site to allow us additional room for the kids to run around and play and so forth. That's going to be an ongoing process that we're going to have to manage with city officials and all the pertinent information that we get to do the engineering of the site. So that's going to be an ongoing process, but again, it is something that is on our minds. As far as detention goes, at this current time, we're anticipating that to be all underground, under the parking lots. All right, anything on Edison? Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we move right on to Bryan. Yes?
So after we talked this week, a couple of things dawned on me, that Edison's in a unique position, in that it looks like, you know, from your bird's eye view here, about 40% of the school will be brand-new, and 60% of the school will be vintage 1950-something, right?
It's about right.
What are we doing to the interior of the 1950s vintage building to incorporate some of the cool things that is 21st century learning spaces that's in the new section? Or are we going to have a situation here where it's wiki of tours, wiki of tours of, hey, here's what 21st century elementary education looks like, and now step through this fire door into the 1950s? Or, congratulations, Johnny, you're going to the fourth grade now, and you're going to get in this time-travel rocket and go back to the 50s? What are we doing to prevent that?
As part of the project, and we didn't go over that in great detail, but that's forthcoming, but as part of the project, we do have money allocated for renovating parts of the, actually most of the existing building, so that the entire school will seem refreshed and new. We're also looking at ways of incorporating things within the hallways, breakout spaces within the hallways of the existing building that will allow, as Wendy mentioned, the bounds of the educational lines to blur, so, you know, educational activities will be moving out into the hallways. We're also looking at ways of incorporating things within the hallways, breakout spaces within the hallways of the existing building that will allow, as Wendy mentioned, the bounds of the educational lines to blur. So, you know, educational activities will be moving out into the hallways, actually very much like it happens now, except the kids are on the floor, and there's not much intentional space for that kind of thing. Our intent here is to see if we can craft, carve out some space within the hallways for some of those things that are currently happening in the hallways right now. So that ought to give a flavor and a taste and a little nudge to that 1950s building more towards the 21st century.
And does that apply to the small group workrooms that Wendy was talking about that we can't build enough of?
And that, absolutely, that is part of our thinking right now. Yep.
Thank you.
All of that, I do want to say though, needs to be reconciled and aligned with the budget, and that's part of our responsibility as a team, design and construction team, to come back and go through the designs and make sure that we stay within the parameters that you have set forth for us, and that's just part of the process, and it's going to be ongoing.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. We're going to go over to Bryan.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes?
Just had one question about the media center. On the north side of the media center, it seems like there's glass, I assume that's like a glass wall there that's... On the other side, is that completely open to the hallway, and is that something that is being done in a lot of these new schools? Anything, having it be that open pose any challenges to the other classrooms around that?
Yep. So it's a conversation that we had at one of the school community group meetings. It is something that is, I guess, a hallmark of 21st century design, school design, and you are correct, there is a direct connection from the library where it's at, where we're proposing it to be, to an existing courtyard. That's a glass wall. They're going to, what we're intending on doing is looking at providing direct access from the library to the courtyard, so maybe it's like a reading opportunity, outdoor reading opportunity for the kids if they want to take advantage of it. And then on the other side, on the south side over there, it is, actually, the south side and as well as the east side, it's open to the hallway space and the classrooms that surround it. Like I said, it's kind of, what it does, it serves a number of purposes, and that is to open up the building so that all the program spaces and hidden behind walls, and it also acts as a way of providing greater flow through the school and efficient use of space. So hallways are not just places to get from point A to point B, but they're opportunities, educational opportunities, as we were talking about trying to reclaim in the old portion of the building. Wendy, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that? I probably stole your thunder a little bit, so...
No, I think that's pretty good, and we probably should move on to Bryan, just in interest of time.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to make sure that I added the perimeter. I mean, if you could create the green space in the inside in the parking lot closer to the perimeter, which we've talked about several times.
Yep. That is absolutely on our minds as we're developing the designs.
I just had one, first of all, thank you for your work, and as we talked about, I think, last week, one of my biggest concerns is water management and water retention issues, and so I know that that's been a priority so far in the design process, and I just wanted to reiterate publicly to, you know, keep up that focus, because I think mistakes in that area can be expensive to correct later on. So if we need to bring in other experts or just making sure that as we design this and other projects, that we're being very careful with that topic area.
Absolutely. That's always number one.
Margaret?
And I just wanted to note, I think on slide 10 where you first gave us, and we'll have to go back, where you first listed all the criteria from the advisory group, and I wanted to thank you for, as you walked through the presentation, I saw how you hit on each one of those. I think that's excellent to make sure the community's involved and we continue to take into account what their needs and desires are.
Okay. We're going to march on over to Bryan, if I may, and again, just like we did with Edison, drawings that we used during the referendum, that's the existing floor plan, kind of looking at a bird's eye view. Things that we contemplated, at least for the initial, the initial phase of design and construction, would be to put a new main office with a security vestibule at the front of the building, convert the old main office to two classrooms, and add two classrooms on, and this was going to help us in the interim while we're doing construction throughout the district to help stage kids, and then ultimately, once all of that is done, relieve some of the congestion or some of the, to provide a little bit more elbow room for the kids that are going to the school over there. So that's how that pretty much shook out, and here are the drawings that we're working on right now. Important to point out, this area over here, which is really the new construction, part new construction, part renovation for the main office, and then the classroom spaces that happened over here, so those are the spaces that we're touching. The plans and the thinking has evolved to not convert the main office to two classrooms, but temporary special education space, and then take what was formerly the special ed space and use that for classroom, convert that into classroom, or rate those into classrooms, just to help out the organization of the school in the next couple of years. So we're going to take a deeper dive into both the main office, Wendy's going to come talk to you about that in just a second, and well, that second is right now. So here you go.
All right. So main office right now, being right here. So what we did is we took a look at, as opposed to having that whole main entrance just taking up the whole courtyard as we originally thought, blocking some of the windows in the dining area, an opportunity came to us, and it solved a couple of problems, and one is that you have very actually large locker rooms for middle school, mainly because you have a lot of showers, and we know those are rarely, if ever, used, because they're now turned over to storage, and actually, it's a little bit of a nuisance in the middle schools, so why not take an area that's oversized, since nothing's oversized anymore in these schools, and we ultimately then pushed the main office into that space? Now, we did make up the lockers, you can see, across the hall, and they'll be sized appropriately with fewer, maybe if any, showers to deal with that. And then this main office has all the same characteristics of the last one that we talked about at Edison. Principal, assistant principal, with their eyes on the road, seeing who's approaching the building, the staff at the front desk as well, with visitors having to be buzzed in, all those steps that I had outlined. But that also allows us then to ultimately get a suite of all of your student service providers that right now are squeezed into every nook and cranny of that building, so let's bring them together as a team, just for better collaboration amongst the team, communication, and then students visiting being able to have access to all those resources. And then this main office workroom essentially has all the same components as the one at Edison did.
So from a three-dimensional standpoint, just like we did at Edison, this gives you an idea of where the additions will be relocated. One key feature to point out with the main entrance here, you know, sort of the stepping is done intentionally to allow a more graceful transition from people from the parking lot into the building, but it also creates an opportunity for us to think about what happens on the outside by the main entrance. Now, something more than just a sidewalk that allows you to go to a security vestibule and then into the school, perhaps a plaza, a waiting area both before and at the end of the day, the school day, but also during performances for the auditorium. Can imagine people spilling out if it's a nice day, you know, at intermission and so forth, just to get a little bit of fresh air and so forth. And really, it's going to help ultimately the appearance and the image of the building, give it perhaps a little bit more refreshed and updated character, if you will.
Craig, I just wanted to add one thing from that last slide, because the last slide got cut off. When we moved the lockers over where you see on the, across from the gym there, that used to be the fitness room, on the west side of the gym, the fitness room gets moved to the west side of the gym, and actually ends up in a larger space that would be adjacent to other activity spaces, you just can't see it on that particular...
And I actually have it on this one right here. So you could see, you could see right over here, this is the fitness area that Dr. Moore was talking about. This is the girls' locker, or the boys' locker room, I think, or I think it's the girls' locker room, and this was the boys'. All those get moved over to this side of the hallway, as Wendy pointed out. The fitness area that was here gets relocated over here, again, with a direct connection from the gym between those two spaces. So that's part of the first grouping of projects, along with the main entrance and some of the classroom renovations. Now, what I'd like you to do, if you could, just keep your eye in this area over here, because in the course of the conversations with Jacqueline and the school advisory team, we had a pretty robust conversation with regards to the unified arts programs, again, and this idea that the library is the central focus of the entire footprint of the building, and ways that that could be improved and thought about to extend the educational opportunities for your kids. And as we move to the, it's called the third group, because the construction, design and construction would happen, not in the second group of projects that we're contemplating, but the third group, if you notice, from Terry's slides, but all of this gets reconsidered from a design standpoint. You'll notice that the courtyard gets infilled, the unified arts still is surrounding that, but again, it's the library that kind of connects those spaces to the rest of the building. You'll notice, very similar to Edison, we're looking at keeping kind of an open access from the hallways on both sides, so students are filtering through that space during the course of the day and taking advantage of all the resources that it offers, both on a casual and intentional basis. Special ed, more permanent home for the special ed, kind of rounds out, the renovations contemplated in this area, and then as Wendy pointed out before, the temporary location for a student special ed or the formal main office becomes that, a suite of student services, the psych, social counselors and so forth, that are kind of grouped together in conjunction and in close proximity to the main office, where parents also have access when need to, to those spaces. So that's the third group of projects. We have a long way to go as far as design work goes, but Wendy would like to take a few minutes to update you on our thinking with regards to those spaces.
Okay. Zoom in on that area that Craig was talking about, so we populated it a little bit more here. Remember back at Edison where we talked about the library being the first thing you see and it being very open and transparent? Well, this might not be the first thing you see when you enter, but certainly the library and its expanded role here, and it did need to be expanded by middle school standards, serves that much greater function of really being the glue that then knits together all the unified arts spaces that spill out onto it. One of the big drivers here was Project Lead the Way, the program that's become so incredibly popular and is currently taught off of a mobile cart in the school, is now going to have its own proper home, and we've intentionally nestled it near the industrial art spaces, woods, and the CAD, and computer literacy is another program that's taught off of a cart that would now have a permanent home. So we just think that the synergy between the unified arts, along with the media center, is something really powerful that's going to be transformative for this building. And then not to neglect, talking about the special ed group, that really had some spaces existing that weren't fully suited and weren't really designed as special ed rooms, these now will be, will have a proper toilet room to the size that it needs to be located within that suite. And there's lots of little nuggets too, all over this building, but in this effort, we would be remodeling several, not all, but several of the student toilet rooms, and then taking this area next to the auditorium, which currently is two classrooms, which is really not ideal, there's no natural daylight, they're undersized, and because we've been able to pick up other classrooms, we can now convert this over to some other support areas for guided study, reading, and then a faculty space then with proper toilet rooms and a mothers' room.
So I would be remiss if I didn't mention, the way the Bryan School is organized with just a little bit of tweaking, and we consider this a little bit of tweaking, is really ideally organized the way we would approach a new middle school. So it's really kind of a nice jewel for you here, and again, with just a little bit of adjustments to the main entrance, things that we're thinking about for the library and some of the unified arts spaces, you've got a very well-organized layout for the school, so something to be mindful of as we move forward. This is just a look at...
I'm sorry, Craig, just to go back two things real quick. I have been involved in this process, as you know, from the beginning, and I just want to thank you for hearing every step of the way, everything that all the parents and the teachers have said, because every voice that was heard from this process is reflected here, and when I showed my Bryan middle school son these plans, he's like, well, about the unified arts, he's like, well, that makes sense. And for a seventh grader to see how kind of it does not make sense, because that's his life right now, to look at these, and he goes, why didn't they do this beforehand? It really is, you really have, in not only a 13-year-old boy's mind, but in all of our minds, really, you know, heard us and nailed it with this. I really appreciate all the time and effort you put into it.
You've just made our evening. Thank you. This is, again, really what this shows is the infill, the existing infill of the courtyard back over here, pretty much similar diagram to what we had before, and I think that that pretty much rounds out all of our thoughts. So if you have any more comments or questions, we'd be happy to entertain them at this point. We have a long way to go. The next steps for us are, for the team, is to start taking a look in more detail at what goes on, the materials and the layouts, a little bit, some of the layouts inside of the existing building or the buildings and all the remodeling spaces, and then we've got to take a look at the outside and how that looks and how the community will be perceiving that as they pass by or approach the building. So that's going to be a critical step in what we're doing. And then last but not least, my least favorite part, but also very important, we have to align everything with the budget. So it's just part of the process.
Craig, can you just give a very, you know, quick synopsis of, you know, we have the community meetings in May, what happens over the summer, and a little bit about the design phase? Some of the people may not be familiar with what to expect comes next. You don't have to go in a lot of great detail, but just like a snapshot of what the next couple of months entail?
Sure. So the community meetings that are coming are actually kind of critical, right? So that's our opportunity of getting a broader perspective and input about our projects to make sure we're headed in the right direction. Once we do that, we continue our meetings, meeting regularly, weekly with the administration advisory group, so that's going to continue for the duration of the six, seven years, right? But as far as our next steps, Wyton Company and ICI, that's really, we kind of burrow in during the summer when everyone's away from vacation and really start getting, tuning up the details, making sure we have our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, and again, as I said, making sure that all of that really falls in place with the budgets that we have, and then hopefully at that point, towards the end of the summer, we're getting the next round of documents and heading towards the next milestone date, of which we will keep you all abreast on. So when you come back from the summer, we should be in pretty good shape to start getting into, being one step away from doing the construction drawings, the deeper level of design, the drawings that we have to prepare for bidding purposes to get contractors on board.
Anybody else?
So we're talking about, you have four different groups, lots of different people, although there's a bigger community. So I'm going to go back to Bev, the communications piece, and I know that we're putting things together, putting on the front of the various schools, on exactly what they're getting, but how are we communicating it out to the broader community?
That's a very good question, and what we will be doing is partnering with some other entities outside of D205. Certainly, we know we have our own internal communications through school messenger to get to parents directly here, but to get to the wider community, we'll be working with the park department, and we will also be working with the city to piggyback and use some of their vehicles to send some of our messages out, and if need be, we'll certainly consider some ads and things in the independent to also make sure that the community is fully aware of our meetings, and we do have a couple of things up our sleeve throughout the summer and into August that may look like some walking of neighborhoods, but I haven't talked to Dave about that yet.
He's the one who says no all the time.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Nice seeing you all again.
Actually getting, becoming real, and it's exciting. Yeah. Okay, next up is the district K5 classroom furniture plan.
So last spring, about this time or so, maybe a little bit even before, we put a moratorium on any outside entities...
a moratorium on any outside entities requesting furniture or donating, making requests to donate furniture to the district until we could get a district prototype for all the different grade levels of different furniture options that we would want to see that ultimately we would be moving toward to equip our buildings, and that would also be in conjunction with the planning for the new construction. Todd did that, and we have those in place. We had a furniture committee, we shared those with our building administration. And the PTA has been patient, but has also been asking since late fall, when will we get some information on this topic? And the last time I brought this up, indicating that I owe the PTA a response, I was asked to put together some information on how long it would take us to bring all of our buildings up to speed in regard to furniture. And so Todd put those numbers together, and essentially was assuming a budget of approximately $15,600 per classroom. Then he took a look at the model classrooms that we're employing starting next year, backed out the classrooms that are going to be covered through new construction, and took a look at the remaining needs across all of our elementary buildings. And what we came up with was the fact that we currently spend $60,000 a year on furniture. And so our principals make capital requests, Chris meets with them, they make some priority decisions, they authorize different things, and that's about what our annual budget is. So when you consider what it will take to ultimately move toward a model where all of our classrooms have similar furnishings, it would require a budget of approximately $300,000 a year, which is really somewhat unrealistic. And so if we spent, if we only spent the $60,000 a year that we're currently spending, it would actually take us about 30 years to bring every class in the district up to parity. And by that time, you would essentially be developing the next master plan for what would likely be the next, you know, bond release. You'd actually be doing that probably before you could equip all the rooms in that manner. So even just estimating, upping that furniture, and this is just purely hypothetical because there's been no discussion with any formal discussions about what we would budget in that area, but just to have a hypothetical number. If we up that number to $150,000 a year, we start looking at it being more like about a 10-year or 12-year process. So this construction project is about six years overall, and there's no way that we could bring this into line in six years without significantly increasing our budget, which would come at the expense of something else, obviously, which I don't know that people would want to see that. So I bring this out there because if we took an approach similar to what we did with technology, it's probably, Dave, I don't know, it's taken us 10 years to get to this point where we can say we probably have all of our classrooms at all of our grade levels equipped to where we think they need to be to support our educational programming. So, and that was, you know, with outside support. So if we took a similar view and were accepting furniture donations, I would say we would want to approach that in the same way where we would just, if people wanted to help us expedite the process, we could then reallocate what would be our existing expenditures into other areas across the district to try to move through this process more quickly. I just, I don't know if that's the board's wish, but I need, I really believe that I need to respond to some of the people that have been asking me these questions about where do we stand on a willingness to accept furniture donations. So knowing that we have a model plan for all of the grade levels and that we would obviously treat it the same way we treat a technology where we would move in a certain direction, but just, you know, try to allocate funds across the district to move in that direction more quickly, am I able to tell outside groups that if they want to support us with furniture donations, as long as they meet the district expectations, that we are amenable to that? Or do I need to tell them that we are not interested in accepting donation requests for furniture?
Comments? What, Karen?
My question, I kind of, I said, have we talked to the PTAs about it? They're asking about it, but I guess my, the real clarification is to make sure that we're equitable, because that's what we had to work with, with the technology piece. So how do we learn from that experience in this process?
Well, I just, I guess I would look at it like this, if, whether we keep it at $60,000 or we up it to $100,000 or whatever number the finance committee picks or the board's comfortable with, or Chris is comfortable with, or whatever, donations come in from a certain school. We have that plan over time to say, we're going to allocate, we're going to do, over the next two years, we're going to do, you know, kindergarten and first grader or something like that. If donations come in, we just reallocate money we would spend from the donation into the other areas in the district so that we spread that out among the buildings until we move everybody along through, you know, through the years to get them to a certain point.
So just so that I'm clear, what I'm drawing the analogy is what Mary has been doing with resources in learning and teaching. So as we get donations from other places, and I'm going to just say, schools and PTAs, then our district budget gets allocated to the schools that are not getting the, that are not raising the funds to support their schools. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that's how we make it equitable?
That's how we can make it equitable. I would say the one difference is that with some of the resources, particularly the bookrooms, guided reading, all of those types of materials, that's something we can utilize, a lot of our grant funding, where with the furniture, we may just have to look at it a little differently. Doesn't mean it probably can't go through the grant, but then we just have to look at how we maybe do some other things.
Yeah, so that's part of it. That's part of it, so that's a good point. I think the other point is just the overall expense, it's just going to take longer.
So I'm just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm in favor of the concept, but if we're, you know, if we're pursuing a separate avenue of discussing our donation policies in general, and that seems like it's moving along, we're going to be at a meeting in May, it sounds like, for that, doesn't it make sense to receive those recommendations first before we start accepting funds for this purpose? Would be my thought. Or do it simultaneously?
We can. The PTAs have been waiting for a response for a while, and so they've got budgets that they typically like to clear out annually due to their policies and their organizational expectations are that the money that they raise, they like to spend within that budget year. So then, they would just, whatever they want to donate, they would probably in May, you know, request to make donations towards something else instead of this. I don't know how many of them specifically want to do this, but no new agreement with the PTAs is ever going to compromise the existing equity policy. It would only create some checkpoints to where we would have some more, the current thinking is that we would have some more preliminary conversations with the intent of the PTA organizations across the district earlier on in the year so that we wouldn't get these random donations throughout the year and later in the year. We would know on the front end that what they are budgeting for and what they are looking to support is consistent with what the district wants to support, similar to what we do with the foundation when they kind of plan their giving for the year. So in an ideal world, I would agree that that makes sense, considering where we're at. I don't know that we're, I think it's just a matter of the board's preference, to be honest with you.
Well, the struggle is that the PTAs have to clear their funds annually. You can't keep carrying this money over in a nonprofit scenario. But my question would be, going back to when, I remember that we had, you know, line items that we were carrying over when, waiting to buy iPads or waiting to buy a new Chrome Cart. Would the same kind of mindset be in place that no one school could get so far ahead? I mean, I remember the Chrome Carts where, okay, the PTA can donate this Chrome Cart, but you can only donate one ahead of wherever else the district was able to keep everybody? Would you use that same kind of mentality when working on furniture donations? I guess just to keep it equitable across the schools.
Well, if we do have the new policy or procedures in place with the PTA, then that certainly could be part of the initial conversations in the fall, and then we would have a chance to manage that process a little bit and ensure that we don't have anybody going so crazy that there's no way that we can follow, as a board, follow our own policy. So I think that if that's what the board would like to see, I think with the new practices in place, it should be easy enough to do that.
Mark, or, hang on, did you have something? No, okay.
You know, the PTA council meeting that I attended a couple of months ago, one suggestion that I heard is, what if all the PTAs raised money for the same thing? And we're challenging the foundation, the PTA council, every PTA, to come up with procedures to achieve equity. And I think it's a whole lot easier to do so when you have something concrete to work with. And I think this is a great concrete example. Well, why don't we use this as the example and go back and say, you know, this is clearly a worthy cause throughout the district. How can we achieve this goal and ensure equity, using private money, using public money? And I think this could be our prototype case and something we definitely need to make it concrete and to make, and so that all the involved parties have something to work with.
No, I was just going to say, I am in agreement with everything that's been said. I know the, from years ago, the tech, the way they purchased resources from the technology group was very successful for the exact reason that you were talking about, Jim, is that there was a common, there was a common theme, and there was an understanding that, as Courtney, you mentioned, there were some type of limitations where there was not going to be this drastic difference between the schools. So we have a, we have a best demonstrated practice that has occurred in the past. It's how we put this into place. I like all the information, all the discussion that we're having about this, this six-year timeframe. I just want to be sure that it is clear and it's understood that there are some limitations in this delivery. So I'm making some crazy example. If one school raises, and I'm making this up, obviously, one school raises the entire amount of $343,000, that all of that money could not just go to that one school and have them reach their entire furniture goal and have the other schools behind by five years. So are there any safeguards in assuring that there's some type of process to manage this?
Well, now that I, I mean, I guess now that I have an understanding of, or at least what I think the board is saying it wants to see, then knowing that we can manage that process so that when we get this in place with the fall, in the fall with the PTAs, where we sit down and the PTA council works with their local PTAs about their budgets, and we take a look at what they want to spend it on, and we have some administrative conversations, knowing that that's what you want to see, I think it's relatively easy to manage the process. And knowing, you know, another thing that's been a missing link that we want to kind of correct is our principals get caught in between a rock and a hard place because they want to keep their families happy and, you know, the expectations aren't completely clear. So I think, you know, making that clear to them, that everybody knows what the expectations are, should be easy enough to make sure that we don't get, you know, way out of whack with some of those kinds of things.
Karen?
The only clarification I want to make is we can't look at the dollars necessarily because some of the bigger schools, it's going to take more dollars. It's percentage of classrooms or something like that. So right off the bat, we need to be careful about how we word things because with the larger schools, they're going to have to provide more money. It doesn't mean that it's not equitable across the schools because they're various different sizes.
Jim?
I just want to reiterate that I think we will be more successful if we hand the challenge to the relevant parties, who I believe are the foundation, the PTAs, the PTA council, and say, come back to us with a plan, rather than the board impose the plan because we're not all wise. All right, like, we got elected, our IQs didn't go up any, as Chris Bloom said. Let them come back to us. Because also at that PTA council meeting I attended, another suggestion I heard was, they were talking about certain furniture, and they said, well, why don't we, why don't we raise money as a district for stand-up desks? Well, as a district, one thing the PTA council could decide is, we're going to raise money this year to re-equip all the first-grade classrooms in the district, and next year the third-grade classrooms, et cetera. Maybe that's the solution they come up with, but I don't want to impose that upon them. I'd rather them bring that to us.
Jim, along those lines, I would just say, they've been very amenable to all of these conversations. I do not foresee a lot of issues working together with them in the types of ways you're describing.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify from my comment earlier, just given that there's a time constraint on the funds and the long duration of the project, I would be supportive of starting that process now, right? Even if we haven't finalized, you know, our policy on donations in the future. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Yeah, just given the other discussion points. Thanks.
I think this works well with, you know, what's going to the PTA council and, you know, what the foundation, I think, wants to do and what they've talked about a little bit. So I think, you know, and what worked with technology, it worked well. And it moved it faster than what the district could have done, and I think people were pretty happy with that process, so.
Anything else? Okay, yeah, Freedom of, I lost my agenda, Freedom of Information Act.
So we had six Freedom of Information requests that we received, three requesting specific employee information, which were granted, one requesting specific building information, which was granted, one requesting specific Board of Education minutes and audio, which was granted, one requesting a specific contract, which was granted.
Okay. Bev, Tweet of the Week.
Social media has become the way we really archive life. It is our yearbook, our journal in many ways. And today, what we often do at each board meeting is to highlight some aspect of social media. We call it Tweet of the Week. It probably will expand to Social Media Post of the Week in some kind of way. But tonight, the nod goes to, the shout-out goes to the D-205 Transition Program. Their Twitter handle is @D205Transition, if you'd like to follow them, as well as check out our own Twitter feed, @ElmhurstD205. And their tweet says, "Academics, it's part of community-based instruction. @D205Transition students compared prices for household items across stores and determined at Costco was the best value," that's branding for Costco there, "at Costco was the best value for laundry detergent and fabric softener. #IncreaseIndependence, #LifeReady, hashtag," and they went crazy on the hashtags, "community inclusion, @YorkD205, @DCDT." inclusion, @YorkD205, @DCDT_CEC." So a big shout out to our transition program. They are making changes in the lives of our students on a daily basis. I can honestly speak from personal experience. I have a sister who has special needs and she's probably, to my 48, she's about 46. If we had a program like this at her time, how much farther along she would be. So congratulations to our program and keep doing great work.
Thank you. Okay, next is board communications. So this is an opportunity, if we want to say anything, we can communicate. All right. With that, we have two upcoming meetings, Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:30, and Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. With that, I will adjourn.